All right, I am calling this public hearing to order. This is to consider ordinance 2024-10, which proposes to rezone certain parcels of land located at and adjacent to 4799 Lander Road, the former New Song Church property, from the U1 zoning district to the S1 zoning district, and to amend the village zoning map. If adopted, ordinance 2024-10 would submit the proposed rezoning and zoning map change to the voters of Orange Village. So just before we start, I just want to give everyone a heads up on how this will work. We'll begin with a presentation by Ken Weinberg from the KJI Group, just to give everyone an overview of the project. Mayor Klein had some comments he was going to share. Some comments were submitted to me and to Anna prior to the hearing. I will read those as well. Then we will open it up to audience comments. We will go in order here on the sign-in sheet. Ken from KJI will make his final remarks, and then we will close the public hearing. We will go right into the special counsel meeting, where we will vote on the ordinance. First, I want to thank everyone for coming out tonight. This is an outstanding turnout that we have here. We do have a couple of seats still up front. If anyone does want to grab a seat, there are some still available. We did have a lot of people sign up to speak, so when it is your turn to speak, we are going to limit the comments to two minutes in the interest of time tonight. We will time it. We will give you a 30-second warning when you have 30 seconds left, and then we will hold this up when it is time. The comments that I will read as well, I'm going to time myself, so I will cut myself off from these comments at two minutes as well. When you do make your comments, this is not a dialogue or discussion. You do not get another chance to speak, so you get your two minutes. You cannot rebut anybody, or you don't get a chance to speak after your initial comments. With that being said, Ken from KJI Group, if you would like to give your presentation. And Ken, you'll be limited to two minutes as well, if that's okay.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening, council members and Mayor Klein. My name is Ken Weinberg, and I'm not only the president of the KJI Group, but a 10-year resident of Orange Village, where my wife and I have enjoyed raising our two boys. I'm excited to be here for this public hearing regarding the ordinance, regarding the parcels of New Song Church. Seeing everyone in the audience, and knowing you will be hearing both positive and negative items about the rezoning, I believe now more than ever that the matter should definitely be put on the ballot, allowing the majority of the Orange Village to decide how to move forward and not be decided by a few in this room. While we have already seen details on this project, I want to take a moment to recap a few of what I believe to be noteworthy highlights. Parcels in question are currently home to a vacant church that has been falling into disrepair for many years, housing a building that is out of place surrounded by single-family home properties. The proposed project will bring beautiful new single-family homes, which will enhance the appearance and value of the surrounding area. Since day one, we have looked at many different design approaches to the site and have been working diligently with different departments of the village to create a project that could be benefit to Orange Village. After a series of detailed meetings resulting in project modifications, planning and zoning confirmed the project met the standards set forth in the city ordinance guidelines, and also included multiple provisions to protect the city with their future planning, and such comments regarding buffering of existing homes.
30 seconds, Ken.
Larger setbacks. Oh, wow. Off Lander, the first home will be set back 100 foot to mirror other typical homes on Lander. We're keeping 40% green space. We increased side yards from 15-foot minimum to 50-foot, and we're maintaining the stream, which ultimately, or I'm sorry, we're maintaining the existing stream on the eastern part of the property, as well as adding two water detention ponds to not only control water on our site, but water that is currently flooding onto West Woodcrest during.
Time. Two minutes goes fast.
I might go past the two minutes. The New Song Church has accepted a purchase offer. However, the proposed purchase is contingent on the purchaser being able to build a new neighborhood on the old church property. In recognizing that the land is a resource, and as community leaders, we need to be stewards by considering its use for the benefit of the community and our future. In this case, the village does not own or have control of the property, nor do its neighbors. Thus, we are obligated to consider the rezoning requested for the development of New Song Church property. Therefore, I offer my view of the facts and how this project is in the best interest of the village. To begin, we need to acknowledge the current conditions, which Ken alluded to. I don't think I need to go into a great deal of discussion, but those have argued that the village could enforce the property code, but that takes time and resource that we could be devoting to more productive uses. It has been argued that the village should pursue classification of the property as taxable, but that too would cost money. As the village gets only 13% of the real estate tax, it doesn't make sense for the village to expend funds for. Okay, I'll move in. The estimated value, property tax value is $2,000 per year that would come from reclassification. The property is also, as we know, a nuisance. The alternative to the negatives created by the current condition is a neighborhood with 16 houses, and there's been pushback from residents based on a misunderstanding of some of the facts, and I view those as important to share with you. The master plan, as many have referred to, is a living aspirational document and not a gospel. It was written by a team that included me in the process to put forward our desires and intentions for the village's future. It is subject to alteration as designs come forward and conditions change. Among the items noted in the master plan is something that is referred to as backland development. Backland, can you hear me? Backland development was an issue that I brought up when I came on council 13 years ago, 12, no, 11 years ago, and it was a concern that I had that we did not regulate it in any way, and therefore it is open for others to do things that they, that we might not necessarily want to see happen. Let me define what backland is in that context, and what this project, and what it is not as it relates to this project. Backlands in Orange Village represent the fact that we have exceedingly deep properties in many areas of the village. A person could come in and make a deal with a resident to purchase.
Excuse me, the public comments are limited to two minutes. The mayor has prepared a prepared statement. There will not be any speaking out like this as well. If people speak out, you will be asked to leave. We will have order during this meeting.
Thank you. To begin, to return to what I was saying, backland is backland. It's the back part of a parcel. It would, could be acquired by an individual by purchasing that portion of a property that exceeds the 1 and 1/2 acres required for the U1 zoning district. By aggregating a number of those properties together, a developer could put together enough land to create a development, perhaps the size and scale of an Orange Wood or Orange Hill development in the backyards of others, and with acquiring a single outlet property to the streets would then be able to have a development. We do not regulate that right now, and therefore it is, that is what backland is about. This project is not. It has frontage. It is a contiguous parcel. While it's made up of multiple parcels, it is a single owner of a single property, and therefore it is not backland. The property is unique in many ways, and other, from other properties in the village, the variance in rezoning referendum action will not set a precedent for other sites in the village. This process would be unable for others to replicate because no other sites would have the same conditions that give rise to the practical difficulty and hardship associated with this property. If this property were to be developed under the U1 zoning, which by right the owner could pursue without village intervention, the economic result would be inconsistent with other residents in the district and consequently not viable. Because this development is being approved by variance and vote of the residents, the village can and has imposed certain controls on the development, which would not be available if the property were being developed as a matter of right. The development will create a neighborhood with housing that matches housing that exists throughout the village and in this district. In other words, the proposed development fits the neighborhood very well. Thank you, and I exceed the rest of my time.
All right, thank you. All right, moving on, I have several comments that were submitted prior to the meeting from residents and other speakers that were not able to make it, so I will read those now. I will set a timer for two minutes and cut myself off at that two-minute mark. The first one is from Cindy Harts. Cindy reads, "I am a longtime resident of the area, having lived in Pepper Pike and Moreland Hills previously. However, I am fairly new resident to Orange Village. I really love the area for its charming community and physical beauty. I understand that on my part of Woodcrest, a sewer line was proposed due to the New Song development, but quashed due to neighbor canvassing residents and successfully blocking the effort. Clearly, I was not included in that audience and would not have supported these efforts. Progress is coming whether we'd like it or not, and some of it is good, so I think we should embrace and shape it into something that is appealing and meets the needs of the community, rather than think about it in black and white terms and exclude people. In my brief time as a resident of Orange, I have been impressed with how friendly and forward-thinking they are. Septic tanks are very expensive and difficult to maintain. They are challenging and expensive in the buying and selling cycle. Their one advantage, returning treated effluent to your property, is a disadvantage in our neighborhood, where our water table is already problematically high. Environmentally speaking, sewers are far better and less costly, save the cost of the hookup. I find it silly that one would advocate for septic in our neighborhood where flooding and water intrusion is an issue, and I can't imagine Orange Village would force you on the sewer against your will while asking you to pay for the full hookup. I am sure there will be options and a transition period. These details would be good to know, though. The reality is that the sewer will eventually come and is better for the environment. I am entirely in favor of running a sewer line in front of my property, and I would hope, if someone were to have an opinion on this, that they, that they compare the environmental and financial impacts of each choice. It leads me to think that the only reason someone would block the sewer initiative in our neighborhood would be because they just want to block the development of a property in a completely different neighborhood, which seems like an overreach to me." Timer set here. All right. The next one is from J. David Heller. He's the president, CEO, and co-founder of the NRP Group. "I unfortunately will be out of town on August 1st, but I'd like to provide some written comments that could be read for the record on the above referenced matter. I first want to introduce myself to the council members. My name is David Heller, and I am president, CEO, and co-founder of the NRP Group. My firm is one of the top-ranked multifamily development groups operating in 14 states. The NRP Group is a vertically integrated development firm with internal groups that handle development, construction, and property management. While I live in a neighboring city to Orange Village, I drive past the property in question frequently. Having seen some of the proposed plans for the single-family neighborhood, I believe it will be a great enhancement to the village from the vacant church building currently sitting in an otherwise residential area. Rather than speaking about positive impacts in development like this, I would rather speak about the negative comments made on the developer's experience. Prior to starting his own company, Ken Weinberg was a valuable asset to us at the NRP Group for seven years. As a vice president of the construction group, he was an integral part of many development projects in Ohio, as well as other states we operate in, both for ourselves internally as well as for our third-party clients, projects that range from $20 million to $100 million." Ken was involved in projects from initial concept on a vacant parcel of land through its final construction completion, ready for tenant occupancy. Prior to joining the NRP Group, he had some great experiences at Maruus Brothers Construction, a Cleveland-based general contracting firm, which is what initially attracted us to him. Over his career, Ken has gained experience while many different types of developments, which I believe prepare him for success here. While we were sad to see him leave, we knew he had the right background to succeed on his own at the KJI Group. I am hopeful that hearing about his involvement in prior developments will settle any concerns village residents might have expressed." This next one is from Seth Task. He's a senior partner at Berkshire Hathaway Home Services Professional Realty. "As a former graduate of Orange High School and a Realtor and brokerage owner within the school district, I am writing to express my strong support for the proposed rezoning of the New Song Church site to accommodate single-family housing. This initiative is critical in addressing the severe housing shortage currently affecting the Cleveland area, particularly within the single-family home inventory space. The demand for single-family homes has far outpaced the supply, leaving many families unable to find suitable housing. The shortage not only impacts the quality of life for our residents, but also hampers the growth and stability of our community. By rezoning the New Song Church site for single-family housing, we can take a significant step towards alleviating this pressing issue. New housing starts are essential to meet the needs of our growing population. The development of single-family homes on this site will provide much-needed housing options for families, stimulate local economic growth, and contribute to the overall vitality of our community. Furthermore, it will offer an opportunity to create a neighborhood that fosters a sense of community belonging, which is vital for the well-being of our residents. The New Song Church is an ideal location for this type of development. It offers ample space and is suited in a neighborhood that can greatly benefit from new housing opportunities. Rezoning this area will not only address the immediate housing needs, but also set a precedent for future developments that prioritize the housing demands of our community. I urge you to support this rezoning proposal and to recognize the significant positive impact it will have on our community. By approving this rezoning, we will be taking a proactive step in addressing the housing shortage and supporting the development of a stronger, more resilient Cleveland. Thank you for your attention to this important matter. I am confident that with your support, we can make meaningful progress in resolving the housing crisis and ensuring a brighter future for all residents of our community." He went on to say, "I think it's important to be clear that I am not in any way involved in this project, have no financial benefit whatsoever from its approval. Our housing shortage at a, on a local, state, and national level is real, and statistically speaking, we aren't even close to the critical mass on it yet. Any opportunity to create new housing, especially when enhances a community like this one, is so very necessary." And I'm out of time on that one. All right, next we have from Kate Rabinevich. She's at 4389 Lander Road. "I am writing to you today as a dedicated Realtor, mother, and a committed member of our wonderful community in Orange. My name is Kate Rabinevich, and I am deeply invested in the future of our city, both professionally and personally. I am writing in support of the proposal to sell the abandoned church and alter city zoning from a U1 district to an S1 district. This project presents a unique and much-needed opportunity for our community, and I strongly urge you to vote in favor of it. As a Realtor, I am acutely aware of the current demand for housing inventory. The addition of 16 new lots will help alleviate the pressure on our housing market, providing more options for families looking to make Orange their home. This development will not only meet the needs of prospective buyers, but also enhance the overall appeal and value of our community. As a mother, I recognize the importance of providing inventory to accommodate growing families that wish to join our excellent school district. The new development will offer opportunities for young families to establish roots in Orange, contributing to the vibrancy and diversity of our community. Moreover, as a committed member of our community and a resident on Lander Road, I understand the significance of offering a range of housing options. The debate between rural and suburban living is crucial, but I firmly believe that a diverse array of neighborhoods and living environments strengthens our city. This development will provide a balance, ensuring that we cater to the varying preferences and needs of our residents. In addition to those personal perspectives, there are several tangible benefits of the development. The new lots will generate additional taxable revenue, which can be reinvested into our community to improve public services and infrastructure. Transforming an abandoned and unoccupied building into a vibrant residential area will enhance the aesthetics and safety of our community. Furthermore, the development plans include improvements to stormwater management, which will address existing concerns and prevent future issues in the area around the church. I understand there is opposition to changing the current zoning rules with concerns about creating a less rural environment. However, I believe that this development strikes a balance between preserving the character of our city and meeting the growing demand for housing. It is essential to adapt and evolve to meet the needs of our residents and ensure the continued prosperity of Orange. In conclusion, I urge you to approve..." And that's the time on that one. This next one is from Daniel Goldstein at 260 Capitol Hill.
"I apologize as unable to attend in person today. I previously spoke in person during the July 3rd council meeting. To summarize my previous comments, I can appreciate the concern of those who disagree with repurposing the land. However, four years of unoccupied land is not an ISOAR and only decreases the appeal to attract more residents. Ultimately, this is a thoughtful proposal elevating the area aesthetically and financially. Simply put, this hearing is part of the democratic process. The proposal meets all of the necessary requirements to grant it the right to move it to the ballot in November."
Can you guys adjust your microphones properly to speak? I'll try and speak into it. And... It's at my mouth. Let me... Okay. Okay. All right. This last one is from Nina McLaughlin, 4499 Lander Road. "To whom it may concern, I thought this was already decided. Why is it back? Well, obviously, something is still going on, so please don't do this. It's too much. Yes, someone can make money, and yes, there'll be more money from taxes. Is that all that really matters? Just put a few houses in the front area. You can make a shared drive or short private road up the side for access." That is the part of the church building and parking lots, which is already developed land, but Orange Village should buy the rest of it and make it, just make it a nature reserve. Just keep, just keep to preserve it for the sake of the air, the environment, the runoff abatement, a place where nature can still have a home in Orange Village. Thank you for your time in reading this. Okay, so that is all the comments that were submitted prior, so now we will go in order here. We don't take, do we not take questions now? Or?
Just to clarify, point of order, I submitted a comment, email to Mr. Billstein. I did not refer back to him, but I assume that could be considered communication.
Well, the instructions were to email your comments either to myself, council president, or to Anna, clerk of council, with a request to read them during the meeting. Yeah.
Okay, well, look forward to this response.
First up is Brett Porter, and next, yeah, next would be Jenna Konstantinovski, so if you want to like get in the on-deck circle, you can do that, too. Brett, what's your address?
It's 3725 Greenwood Drive.
Pike Drive?
Greenwood Drive.
Greenwood.
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 Can I just ask that everybody speak in the microphone?
Lift the microphone up.
That one's tricky.
This one's tricky. Can you hear me good? Okay. All right, I'll do my best.
Reminder, everyone has two minutes, so.
Absolutely. Good evening, my name is Brett Porter, and I'm here to offer my comments and support for the rezoning of the New Song Church redevelopment project. While I've spent 20 years in the real estate industry, tonight I'm here simply as a member of the extended Orange community. In the last decade, I've lived in Orange Village, just a few doors down from Pine Crest, during the beginning stages of its development. I then lived in Pepper Pike across the street from the Sterling Lakes Development during some of the final stages. I enjoyed the benefit of having those newer homes as strong comps when I sold my home there and moved to where I currently live in Moreland Hills, which is immediately adjacent to six of the sublots in Moreland Commons Development, which is across the street from the schools, and it's in its mid-stages of development. The point is, I've been exposed to a lot of development in varying types, stages, and size. My view, development is inevitable. Truly successful development not only ensures that a need is being addressed for the community, but it also ensures that the development is executed responsibly in a respectful manner to the surrounding neighborhood by maintaining its character and aesthetic appeal. Developing land that is currently zoned but not even used by a religious institution for residential housing creates opportunities for adding to the housing supply of our community. It adds tax dollars to the community and schools, where none currently exist. Through its redevelopment, this project is addressing two needs of our community. Furthermore, I consider this to be responsible development, because I believe it tastefully transforms a parcel of land that, to me, currently doesn't match the character of the neighborhood, and based on the proposed plan that I reviewed, it certainly seems to add significant spacing between the proposed and existing homes, and it maintains notable setbacks, green space, and trees, so that the aesthetic appeal is preserved. I'll share in my many previous experiences, developers aren't typically that sensitive to these types of things. I personally... Thank you.
Yep. I mean, you'll be up next. When you get up there, please introduce yourself and say your name and your address, please.
Hi, I'm Jenna Konstantinovski, and I'm at 4089 Orangewood Drive. Okay, I'm sorry. I'm here today in support of the council voting yes on the rezoning of the New Song Church project. At this time, the project has provided all the necessary requirements for council to vote yes and bring this to a village vote. There should be no question on the vote at this point, blocking it would be against the Orange Charter. Outside of the fact that there should be a yes vote, this small community would bring value to our village. The 16 homes would be paying into our system instead of a building that is falling apart. We would have custom homes that would all have a unified aesthetic. We are lucky to have a builder that is a resident of the village and cares about the integrity of our community. We are wasting resources by having the current building fall into disrepair, and the arguments against this, against this project fall flat. I've seen that our school, I've seen in the art, the comments, that our schools are at capacity, but there's no proof of that. I've heard statements about the reduced tree line, but we are often in situations with fallen trees causing damage to the village. There seems to be an idea that it is wrong for the builder to know the mayor, but what is wrong about a resident in a small village knowing the mayor? It at times feels like a smear campaign against an upstanding citizen. The vote, uh, no campaign has left flyers at my house with misleading information that is lying by omission. You are trying to sway the public opinion with poor practices. This project involves fixing flooding issues, taking care of a community ISOAR, and bring value to our village. Thank you."
After Rodney, it will be Zishan Ghabba, I believe.
Good evening, my name is Rodney Simon, 30-year resident of Orange Village. I have lived three different houses in Orange Village, two of them half-acre lots in Orange Hill Estates, and now I live on an acre and a half lot. I'm at 4940 East Woodcrest. I think the developer for this project is the right person for the project. You have an Orange Village resident who cares about this community, who's going to stay in this community, and he's here to make sure it's done right. This development is inevitable. You can end up with an out-of-state developer, someone from a completely different community who doesn't care about you. If this project's done properly, with the guidance of Ken, the flooding will be taken care of. I live in East Woodcrest. I know nothing about flooding on West Woodcrest. I don't know how bad it is, but I haven't heard anything, and I've lived there for four years. The church, yes, we all know it's dilapidated. Something needs to get done. We know the tax dollars. Everybody here is smart enough to know housing will create tax dollars. It's not about that. The development, inevitable. The right person is here to do it. The housing will match the existing Orange Village. You're not going to have some crazy development with houses that won't fit the style. He's a good man, he's a good developer, and he's going to make sure it's done right. I think we need to support Ken in this development. Thank you very much.
My name is Zishan Ghabba. I live at 4320 Lander. I'm going to keep it short. I'm a fairly new resident of Orange. I moved last September, and I've worked over 15 years in consulting and in the fintech industry. One of the clients that I consulted for is called Safeguard Properties way back in the day, and one of the things that Safeguard Property does is they have banks as their clients, and these banks pay Safeguard Properties to preserve foreclosed properties. Now, why do banks spend so much money? It's because they want to preserve the value of a foreclosed property. So if we have a property within the city that is vacant and is dilapidated, and it's not being taken care of, it's only going to bring down our values. So as a newest resident of Orange, I only want to see our property values go up, and I want to see new tax revenue for the, for the community as well. So if we can get all of that, it not only, it raises our values, so it's in our best interest. And, you know, while I was at the, at the party in the park, it was really disappointing to hear some of the comments from, from certain individuals who were making very false accusations of, you know, the developer has no experience, et cetera. It's just very disheartening to hear some of those comments and just, you know, blatant lies that, that go on with, with the campaign, you know. I would hope, as a community, we would come together and really do the right thing, support Ken. He is an experienced builder, and it's in the best interest for, for all the residents. Thank you.
The next up is Ron Konstantinovski, and then Mark Verdave after that.
Thank you, neighbors, friends. Yeah.
Where the twist where the green little pink thing is at, to type?
Towards me. All right, there we go. Ron Konstantinovski, 645 Beacon Hill Drive in Orange. Ron Konstantinowski, 645 Beacon Hill Drive in Orange. Spoke a little bit about this project earlier a few weeks back. One of the comments that one of the council members made really struck home to me. It was about being a neighbor, and if you buy a house in a neighborhood, what is your responsibility to your neighbors? And what do you expect from the neighbors? And, and it got me thinking a lot when I came home, so I appreciate that. And it got me thinking, why am I actually in favor of this? What is it for? Does the neighbor next to it have a say? Well, they should have a say. What about the neighbor across the street? What about around the corner? Interesting, right? Because we're all a neighborhood. We should all be speaking up for each other and have the best in mind, right? So that's kind of why I'm here, and got me thinking a little bit more about it. So the green space is important. Forty percent of the property is green space. I, I did some digging, so I looked at some of the other developments in the area. We're talking about 16 lots on 13 and a half acres. Say, well, we don't want high, high-volume development in here compared to Moreland Commons, currently in the process of being built, built, right on Chagrin, right down the street here. Forty-one houses and 18 townhomes, 59 total properties on 21 acres. That's high density. Lux property, that's for rent, for-rent apartment buildings. Eighty-two units on eight acres, 40 buildings, 82 units. That's what I don't want for my neighbors. That's what I don't want here. That's what I'm trying to prevent. I think we are looking out for our neighbors. We have a local developer. We have somebody that cares about the community, low density. It fits into the community and the aesthetic. That's why I'm in favor of it. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Mark Verdova, 459 Dunwoody Drive. I'm a Vice President at Pain in Pain Custom Home Builders. I also have my real estate license and am a past president of the Home Builders Association for Portage and Summit County. And so I just wanted to speak. I'm certainly biased, pro-development. That's what we do. In my professional opinion, I think that this is certainly an incredibly desirable, prominent area. I think that it fits a need that people want to build and live here. That's indisputable. And I do believe that, based on the plans, that what would be built here would add value to the surrounding homes. Knowing the prices of construction now and what would be built in this area, I think it would add to the value. And from the development plans that I've seen, it would be, they're trying to minimize the impact, which, again, I think is a good thing as a developer. So just wanted to come and speak in support of the project. Thank you for hearing me out.
Thank you. Mark, what city do you live in? Mark, what city do you live in? Okay. I just couldn't read what you wrote in here.
Next up is Robert Cole, and then Jim Boyle.
Good evening. My name's Robert Cole. I live at 20 Orchard Circle in the Villas of Orange. I'm not here as a developer. I'm not here as a real estate agent or a lawyer. I'm just here as a private citizen. I would like to see the city of Orange go about this and make a thoughtful decision based on the facts. And to that end, I would like to see Mayor Klein's information published with emphasis on the objective factual information. I would like to see things not made by default. One way or another, this property is going to have to do something. It's going to have to be probably developed, and I think that's fine. But if we have the facts, I think people can make a more informed decision, and I think we're going residential, okay? I just see no other way around it. If people want to say no to rezon, that's fine. I respect their opinion, but tell me what we can do else with this land that makes any sense. We can't just say no because that's just kicking the can down the road and we'll be here in two years anyway. We have a good proposal in front of us. If it makes the most sense for the village, it makes the best and highest use of this property, let's do that. But let's have a decision based on facts rather than emotion. I think that, I can't say whether this is the absolute perfect plan, but if it's not, let's tweak it. But let's have a thoughtful decision from, and some feedback from council as to what is the direction we want to take this property going forward and to develop it for the basis of the community. Thank you.
Good evening. Jim Boyle, 31399 Fairview Drive. It's comforting to know the level of support this project has from the development, real estate, community. I don't know that that is shared by the residents here. I've been at this body now more than I care to acknowledge, and quite frankly, what's going on here is incredibly, incredibly condescending and procedurally done wrong. I'm sure all of you know, I'm sure the law director's told you, I've filed motions, I've had my lawyers file motions to intervene and to ask for relief from judgment from the improperly granted variance, and that will come back. And I said, I begged you guys two months ago, I go, send it back, have the council vote on it, and you wouldn't do it. That's where we are. So this is going to be litigated in one phase or another. I'm sure he's shared that with you, so you're aware of that. The variance is a necessary proceeding event to the actual zoning aspect, and we know that. And when this comes back, if you move forward on this, we're going to have problems. I'm asking you right now, hold this off till the, till the lawsuit is resolved, because make no mistake about it, it is not resolved. I didn't file it for delay. I literally begged you guys to bring this back. I said on two occasions, just bring this back and vote on it. You cannot make decisions, a council cannot make decisions, behind closed doors. Stacy, I love you. I hope you're here, but I don't think you can vote remotely. The Attorney General has said that you can't. I'm sure if the law director's issued an opinion saying you can, I'd certainly like to see it. As I mentioned at the last meeting, I said I don't take the work that council does for granted. The work you do, the votes you do, that you take are important. I view your vote as something that matters. This zoning is not a perfunctory vote, but there are two people that believe it is a perfunctory vote. One is the mayor. The mayor on June 11th said that the rezoning of the property will be on the ballot on November 5th, 2024. You and your residents, who view this issue in a similar manner, have the opportunity to convince your neighbors. You haven't even voted on it. The mayor's decided that it's going on the ballot. The law director said, the law director said, "In the interest of avoiding protracted litigation regarding the variance, the parties, the council have agreed..."
Time is up, Mr. Boyle.
"...to act legislation to place this zoning on the ballot." You haven't even voted on it. It hasn't even come before you for a vote.
Time is up, Mr. Boyle. Thank you. Next two speakers are Richard Karsis, I believe it says, and Gina O'Neill.
My name is Richard Karsis. I had a back surgery, so if you can hear me from there, over there, I'm first standing.
We have a handheld mic she can provide to you.
I'm Rick Karsis. I live at 29749 North Hilltop Road in Orange. And I have, and my family, have some concerns about the use of the property and feel that there, we're not talking about yes and no. We're talking about yes for this property and how it can be best used for the community. And I think that the options have not been viewed in a broader sense. I think there's many possible possibilities for this property that doesn't involve developing a homestead, homestead plot. I think there's all kinds of opportunities to get a community to develop, black grants, for example, to, to build a conference center, education center for Orange. I think that would be tremendous for this area, bring a lot of people in to the community for education and training. I think it could be used for incubator program for small business or medium-sized businesses, startups. I think it could be used for a lot of different kinds of community initiatives that are broader than just this plot of 15 houses. I think that the community deserves to have access to this, this property and to use it for the greater good of the community. And so when we talk about the greater good of the community, we're talking about not just whether we approve this development or not, but how we best use this property in the, in the larger sense. And I don't think that's been done. Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Gina O'Neill. I live on Woodcrest in Orange Village. I've been a resident for 20 years. Seventeen of those years, I lived on South Hilltop on a little less than an acre, and now on Woodcrest, I'm on three and a half acres. The reason we moved to Woodcrest is because we wanted to be a little bit more hidden and a little bit more private. When it became to my attention that this development was going to happen, I had a lot of questions because of wanting my privacy, and I asked Ken if he would be kind enough to come over and speak with me, which he did, and he brought his engineer. And my neighbor did an neighborly thing, was very kind, came over, answered all my questions, and afterwards, I was convinced I wanted nothing more than him to build in our village. He cares about his residents. He cares about the development, and I'm all supportive of it. My home, from what I can see from the plans, sits closest to the property line, is the second closest home on the property line. So my property line is 72 feet from the property line that would be built on. There's also 50 feet buffer that he's given us with trees, mature trees, not little stick trees that are going to be built. So with being the closest resident to the property, second closest resident to his property, I want to say that I am all in favor, and I'm also doing, appreciate the worded against it, saying that it's drastic changes and it's a radical change. It's really not. We're still, he's still building on over an acre, which is wonderful. Thank you.
Up is Neil Jackson, followed by Eric Beierdorfer. Beiersdorfer, thank you. Neil Jackson is first, though.
Good evening. I'm Neil Jackson. I live at 30949 Woodcrest, and I am here speaking on behalf of my aunt. I'm her primary caregiver. She would like to come, but she has sent me in her stead. She's a 34-year resident of Orange and supports this plan if for no other reason than for the storm drainage abatement. We have a terrible problem. We feel that this might be a means to alleviate that. That's it. Thank you.
Hello. I am Merrick Beiersdorf. I'm a resident of Orange at 29,000 Emery Road. I'd like to urge the council to not proceed with this. I'm disappointed that I'm here today in the first place. We had a defeated measure on this already that somehow proceeded with some sort of backdoor deal or something, and we're now voting again on something that's already been defeated. So I have concerns around that in the first place. Additionally, you know, I'm a fairly new resident to Orange. I've lived here about three years. I was attracted to the lot size, the zoning that enabled that, and additionally, you know, when I moved here, I said, hey, how do we establish that this is how the village is going to be moving forward? And I looked at the master plan, and the master plan gave me the guidance of how the village determined to, you know, deal with rezoning and, and all those pieces, and this development is not in accordance with the master plan. So I have a concern there. And then additionally, I'm concerned about some bad precedent. You know, we have a lot of large lots in Orange. Some are vacant and poor shape. You know, if we throw out the zoning and, you know, how does this make it easier for other folks in the future to rezone their properties? You know, there was a comment about there's no other properties that are similar to the church, but I know of at least one piece of U1 zoning that's 10 acres that is currently used by a religious institution. You know, what could possibly happen there in the future? I think my last piece is, you know, this has been called a troublesome lot. I think there's some things the village could do to, you know, help alleviate those troubles. You know, why has nothing been done to this point? Removing tax breaks, enforcing laws that we have on the books on current maintenance, you know, putting a gate up so people can't get in or anything like that. So I think that's kind of my time. I appreciate it, and I urge you to vote no.
Up is Charles and Kendall Ambresha-Riddell. Cheryl Klein.
I actually just thought that that was a sign-in sheet. What he said, I am pretty much in full agreement with. I would have fairly significant concerns about how this process has developed. I'm a housing economist, and I do strategy for the world's biggest building materials companies. I don't know a heck of a lot about real estate deals. I created a different level than that, so I'm not in the business at all. But it does seem that there is precedent that we can look back to, and we should be concerned about precedent we're setting now. I completely agree that, that there, to say that property is completely unique and it is going to set a precedent that can't be duplicated, I don't believe that. I also don't believe that development's inevitable. Inevitable is, is a very undefined term, and we have a long time at this. We should make sure that we're considering all the different possibilities and options from what seems impossible perhaps to what seems completely logical and ensure that we're making the best choices. By the way, Charles Ambresha-Riddell, 29550 Pike Drive, 15 years around the corner from here. It's been lovely, but I certainly hope that we can consider the vast variety of options, alleviate the concerns people have about how these deals are done. And if we arrive at this situation at some point that's going to be developed, then it would make me greatly happy to have an Orange resident do the work. But I don't know that we're there yet. I, I think this is, I would caution you about pushing this through.
I'm Cheryl Klein. I live at 161 Orange Lake Drive, and I want to be clear that I am the mayor's wife. However, I have been a resident of Orange for 40 years, and I have my own opinions. The New Song property does not belong to any of us. It does not belong to the village. Tonight, we are not voting to approve or disapprove this rezoning issue. We are merely allowing it to go to the whole community for a chance for all opinions to be heard, so that all residents have a voice. My family was fortunate to buy a house in Orange, and we lived in this great community. My children were able to attend a great school system. My only question is, with limited housing available in Orange, why would we deny this opportunity to other families? Yesterday, I woke up to the noise from the lot behind my house. They were breaking ground on that lot. I could have been upset that the noise woke me up before I wanted to get up, but instead, I was excited for the new family that was getting the opportunity to live in a great neighborhood. Choose your perspective, but let the majority of the community members vote. Thank you.
The next two are Jeff Perry and John Loftus.
Hello, everyone. I'm at 4805 Lander Road. I am the property that is impacted most by this, as I'm sure most of you know. I'm also uniquely situated in that I see what's going on at the church all the time. I've seen the development. I've seen, I've seen people go in the parking lot on occasion. It's fairly regular, but I don't see anything bad going on. One time, I saw a guy in his underwear. That's it. Besides that, nothing. But I have seen a lot of people come in there and work on the inside. There were people making sure that it wasn't dilapidated. They worked for over a month and a half to two months. It can't be that dilapidated. That's a lot of money to be putting into it. It is a well-built building. It was made to last. I have to say, this whole process, the thing that bothers me the most, we have a master plan. If you guys want to change the master plan so that you can do these variances, change the master plan first. That's all this is. You have to follow procedures. That's what the job of council... That's what the job of council is, is to follow that line.
Three seconds.
All I have to say.
Good evening. My name is John Loftus. I live at 4231 Lander Road. This is my fourth opportunity to address this body regarding the rezoning proposal for the New Song Church property. I think you would all agree with me that we live in a representative democracy, where we, the citizens of Orange, elect you to represent us. This requires that you have a much deeper understandings of the issues that come before the council so you can best represent the interests of your constituents, not the developers. I also assume that most of you have read the village master plan, that it was adopted by council and even amended over the years. The master plan, as I have quoted in past testimony, is very clear in discouraging increased residential density and discourages development of backlands so that residential density remains low and a generous amount of space is reserved between residents. The proposal before you is a clear violation of both of these objectives. So I'm going to ask you once again to do your job and represent your constituents and vote this measure down. And by the way, I have looked at through the village charter. And nowhere in that document does it describe looking out for the developer's return on investment as one of your duties. Thank you very much. Good night.
Next up is Joanne Loftus and Stacy Golden.
Hi, my name's Joanne Loftus. I'm at 4231 Lander Road. I received this email. It's from Sue Ellen Andris. She and Jack Andris live at 29599 Pike Drive. And she asked me to read this. She says, Mayor, council members, and Orange residents, I am writing in opposition to the rezoning of the New Song Church property on Lander Road. I recognize that residents of Orange desire homes on lots of different sizes. And I'm happy that our village is able to accommodate people's preferences from quarter-acre lots to one and a half acres or more. So far, the different lot sizes have been in particular areas of the village. The lots on Lander Road are one and a half acres or more. A development of 16 homes on smaller lots in the middle of Lander ruins one of the very things that contributes to the distinct character of our village. We are far more unique than any of our neighbors because homes on our main roads are between 125-plus years old to less than one year old. They were not all built within a few years by developers who let their client choose from a set number of house plans. The charm of our village is that the homes on the larger lots have great diversity. We have ranches, colonials, cottages, farmhouses, et cetera, plus houses built in 2024. Allowing the rezoning of New Song will plunk down a dozen or more houses from one era, from one developer
Thirty seconds.
on small lots and take away a very special ambiance from those of us who celebrate and enjoy the traditional character of our village. Thank you.
Hi, Stacy Golden, 4969 West Woodcrest. I've learned a lot about the village, the council, mayor, and the goals of the village since attending my first council meeting back in May. And at that time, at that meeting, is where the council voted the rezoning request down. I have many, many reasons to why I don't want to see this rezoning issue back on the ballot. It's been stood by other people, and I share a lot of their concerns. But ultimately, two reasons are driving my objection. Council members, I ask you, are you willing to send an issue to the residents of the village to make changes to the rezoning of land parcels to be developed by an entity who filed a lawsuit after you voted the request down? Secondly, once this action was filed, the village law director and the mayor entered into a consent with the entity's attorney sending the request back to the council's agenda again. These actions demonstrated by the developer, the mayor, the law director, appear to me to demonstrate a lack of integrity to work within the ordinances established by the village charter.
Up is Mary Ann and Giff Dyer. Followed by Aaron Ugran, I think it is. Ugran? Ugran.
Mary Ann Dyer and Giff is not going to come up here. He is 91 and a half years old and doesn't see or hear very well. We have lived in this village for 57 years at 4680 Brainerd. We have a double lot. And I am not in favor of bringing a million people into this community. This is a suburb. It is not a city. And I don't like rezoning the sizes of the lots to accommodate these huge homes. And people have no place to go and sit outside and enjoy the deer and the other wildlife that is here. We have a lot of trees on our property. You're going to cut down all the trees and make it a mess. I do not think we need small lots and huge homes. Don't rezone. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Aaron Ugran. I live at 4729 Lander. I have heard several of the residents speak to the master plan. I would second that. I would wish that council would follow the master plan. If we're not going to follow it, why do we have it? And to Mr. Loftus's comment, if it needs changed, let's put in motion something to change it. But at the moment, let's please follow it. I've heard the question is, well, what can we do with this? Well, it's currently zoned for acre and a half lots. So just like all the other homes on Lander Road, the current owner or a future owner of the property is permitted to build approximately five or six houses on the lot without any zoning changes. So they are within their right to do that. So to answer the question is, what can we be done with this? It can be developed with the current zoning. It just can't be done with the profit that the developer would make with 16 houses. So that's why we're here. Orange Village is not here to enrich the developer or enrich the current property owner. I feel this is a ploy just for the developer to extract value from the current and future residents of Orange Village. I ask council to vote no and not pass, send the ordinance to voters by passing the buck. I would normally feel that the electorate could make a good decision, but there's already so much misinformation about this. I'm going to quote from today's Chagrin Valley Times. The mayor was saying, "The court decided in the developer's favor." And I will say, the court did not file. It was a consent decree, which is a mutual agreement between the developer and the mayor. This was not as it, the mayor made it sound in the newspaper. This is his quote. Thank you.
Next up is Lydia Burrell and Mary Keef after that. I'm going to ask you to wait until Anna's back. She's just working on the camera. You can step up, but just don't start speaking until Anna's back. You sure? Okay, I guess she says you're good to go.
Hello, my name is Lydia Burrell, and I live at 30249 Jackson Road. And I'm against the proposal. I'm going to read the Orange Village law here on the standard of review variance. A variance may be granted where the literal application of the provisions of this zoning code would result in practical difficulties or hardship in the reasonable use of a property. And such difficulties or hardship are not necessary to advance any purpose of this zoning code. So the purpose of a variance, then, is to help somebody with a unique hardship. And I don't see this process being applied here. The purpose of a variance is not to maximize the value of a property for the developer to maximize their profit. Thank you.
Mary Keef.
Thank you.
Switch on there to turn it on, I believe.
Hello, can you, okay. I'm Mary Keef. I live at 30199 Jackson, next to Lydia. And I've been in the village for approximately 36, 37 years. The rural nature of the community is what drew me to the community. Land is what's really important and will be important in the future. If we divide ourselves up into little itty-bitty parcels, we'll be no more unique than any of the other suburbs that are in greater Cleveland. But we are unique. We have these huge pieces of property, not necessarily a big house on them. And I would rather see a large home with two and a half acres than to have them crowded on top of each other and dwarf everything that's around them. I'm not against development, but it appears that we're only developing for a certain economic class. We're not diversifying Orange for all economic classes. And that's just plain profit. So that's how I feel. I'd like to see New Song put into a park for the city and then use the front part where the building is for either a community center or something that's important for the village. I'm sure we can come up with it. But I don't need more high-density housing. Thank you.
All right, next up, we have four more speakers. Next up is, need some help with this one, Joseph, who lives at 4139 Lander Road. Can't read the handwriting. And, oh, okay, that would make sense. And Mickey Beachler is after that.
I'm Joe Dubiak. I live on Lander Road. I've lived in Orange Village.
Please make sure you're speaking on the mic.
I think they can hear me.
It's for the people livestreaming it and for the Zoom.
You hear me? Okay. I'm Joe Dubiak. I lived at 4139 Lander three years. I'm watching history repeat itself. 1986, here came the developers and the real estate brokers who wanted to radically change our village at the corner of Emory and Lander. They wanted to have low, I mean, I'm sorry, high-density lots and some other structures. What happened is, the developers got in bed with the council, including three council members who were owners of the property that they were attempting to rezone. So what happened is litigation, all kinds of things happened. Three council members resigned. Three council members were recalled. The only successful recall election in Cuyahoga County. Now, after that, by the way, nothing changed. After that, 1998, the master plan was created. Understand what the master plan is. That's how we want our village to be. We don't have, there have not been any changes in that master plan. 2004, a council passed an ordinance that any undeveloped land had to be in excess of 30 acres. Obviously, this doesn't have 30 acres. You got to stop this stuff. And let me tell you something. I was confronted by a, not confronted, I was contacted, I was contacted by a developer to buy my property.
Mr. Dubiak, that's your time. That's two minutes.
Come on, let me, let me, let me, let me speak a little bit more. Come on, let's, let me tell, let me tell, let me tell history. Let me tell.
We are, excuse me, we are limiting everyone to two minutes. We cannot make exceptions for people. I'm sorry.
So all I can say is, in final, council and--
Your time is up. Thank you.
Back on? On now? Okay. Hi, my name's Mickey Beachler. I live at 4420 Brainerd Road. I also used to live on Woodcrest. I actually signed in also thinking it was just a sign-in, not to talk. But while I've been standing here, I just had a couple of thoughts. I just want to say, some of these are questions, so something just for everyone to think about. First, I do want to say I thought it was inappropriate and irrelevant that council read and are allowing comments by people who are not residents of Orange. Their comments are unnecessary and they cannot vote. I also would like to say, I've never met Ken, but I think it's very nice that he has so many people who support him. And perhaps instead of building a development, he should run for mayor. But if Ken is such a great neighbor, why did he file a lawsuit when council has already voted this down? It seems that this is more about greed rather than community improvement. If it is not greed, then why 16 properties? Why not just nine with the one and a half acres that is already approved? Also, if there is such a serious issue on Woodcrest, why has the village not addressed this in the past? Is this not the responsibility of our village government? Lastly, the community survey is just wrapping up, and some of the questions were about things like community center, a splash pad, et cetera. All good things that this property would be good for. Thank you. And I say, do not vote for this.
Thank you. The last two speakers assigned up are Linda Stahl and Brian Kost. Okay, Linda is skipping. You did not, there's a signup process here. Spock, go ahead. You know what, you're, I'm sorry.
My name is George Keeter.
Sir.
I'm a--
Why?
I'm a four--
I'm sorry, I should not have done that.
No, I'm here. I'm a 40-year resident.
Sir, the process was--
I was actually one of the property holders of--
Sir, we--
Chagrin Valley Church.
Have to stick with the process and follow the rules.
I've divided that property of the summers.
Sir, thank you. Last speaker is Brian Kost. Right up front. Brian, please take the mic. The last speaker, Brian Kost.
Is that an appropriate level where people can hear me?
You're good.
My name is Brian Kost. I live at 4810 West Fairview Drive. I do abut this property and have been at, I guess, two prior meetings at the zoning and planning meeting, and then at the first council meeting where this was voted down, and I voiced my disapproval and urging council to not approve this. My neighbor, Jim Boyle, and I have had extensive conversations about some of the questionably ethical things that have happened since that time. I've also done my own research and looked into the developer myself, and I have spoken with people. I guess I didn't think I needed to bring these people to the meeting, but they did not share the same sentiment and did not feel as though he was a fair businessman. I also looked into this with the Western Reserve Land Conservancy, and I spoke to them about this property in particular. I met with the chief conservation officer, Alex Zaka, who said that they have this property on their radar and want to buy this property, but due to resources, they are unable to do so now. I don't know what the sale price is for this property, but I do know that there's been a surplus in the Orange Village budget that I think would more than be able to cover this through different financial options that I discussed with Alex. I think a lot of people have voiced their concerns about the process of this and about other options and looking into these to make sure that we're doing what's best for the community. I think that we just need to be considerate of what we're trying to accomplish with our village and why it is such a special community. We don't need more houses. You look at Lakes of Orange, I don't think it's even fully developed yet, and it's an atrocity, if you ask me. And I just look at these as most of these houses are going to be on .4 acres, except the back three, which I think are on 1.2 acres. I don't think this is a good idea, and I hope that the village can be true to what our goals are.
Time is up.
And vote this down.
That concludes the audience comments. I do want to thank everyone once again. For final remarks, Ken from KJI Group will have two more minutes to provide his final remarks.
Could I start?
Go ahead.
Comments have been -- a lot of comments have been made in regards to the master plan. Want to talk about a couple of comments that weren't made. The introduction paragraph of the report reads, and I quote, "The plan is comprehensive yet flexible. It is not intended to be static. What was concluded in this report was only a suggested guide that was left open for adjustment based on the village's needs," as it states, and I quote again, "The plan represents the village's desires and aspirations but is not a regulatory document." The report states the village will continue being a community that promotes a high level of sustainability in landscaping and both public and private property, which we are doing with the previously mentioned 40% green space, tree preservation, and design landscape buffers. It also states that the village should be providing diverse housing needs and continue to be a community for all generations. This project will provide an opportunity to comply by allowing more families to move into the village. It speaks to new economic development projects being able to increase the tax base and generate significant revenue for the village to continue to provide the high level of services the residents expect. Converting this 13 and a half acres from tax-exempt land to tax-generating property will have great benefit to the city and the schools. Ultimately, this project will blend with the surroundings.
Second.
Provide needed housing to families trying to move to Orange Village, provide needed taxable revenue for the village and school, maintain green space and have tree preservation, eliminate the eyesore and safety concern from the village and emergency services. In closing, I ask for the council to continue allowing this matter to progress to the ballot to ultimately let the Orange Village residents decide if this zoning should occur. Thank you.
All right, I will now close the public hearing, and we will move into the special council meeting. I call the special council meeting of August 1st, 2024 to order. Will you please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Anna, will you please call roll?
Ilski.
Here.
Alner.
Here.
Foster. Did you see here?
Here.
Okay. Madden.
Here.
Silver.
Here.
Old business and pending legislation and motions, ordinance 2024-10 and ordinance rezoning certain parcels of land from the U1 zoning district to the S1 zoning district, amending the village zoning map, submitting the proposed zoning changes to the voters of Orange Village, and declaring an emergency. This is on for third reading, and it has been recommended by the Planning and Zoning Commission. Is there a motion to approve ordinance 2024-10? Thank you, Phil. I will second the motion. Are there any comments or questions from council members?
I would like to make a statement.
Stacy.
Thank you. I'm going to just mute this so you guys don't get feedback.
Mr. President. Of course, before council.
I want to thank everybody for speaking tonight, everybody who came out, everybody who's emailed. I appreciate it all.
Stacy, hang on.
Issues always present a challenge. People love living in Orange Village because of its character, its welcoming appeal, its wonderful amenities.
Stacy, hang on one second. Begin, I'm sorry. Steve had something he wanted to say.
Before the remote council member speaks, a question has been raised about the authority for her to speak. It is true that state law does not allow people to attend virtually. You may recall there, apparently a couple of years ago, there was a thing called COVID, and state law was enacted. I'm getting feedback over here. State law was enacted. Remote attendance of council members. Under the village's home rule authority, council has adopted an ordinance, ordinance number 105.09, which permits the chair of the committee or the president of council to permit a person to attend virtually. And he has exercised his discretion and allowed Mrs. Vincent to attend virtually to have all of the council members weigh in on this significant subject.
This is not the first time we've -- this is not the first time -- yes, she can vote out. This is not the first time we've utilized it. We used this earlier in the year. One council member was out sick and she wanted to join in, so we did allow it at that time. Thank you for clarifying that. Stacy, please, if you want to start over with your comments, please. Wait, hang on, hang on.
Are you able to hear me? Just give me a thumbs up if you can, because I'm leaving with your mic. Thank you. Development issues always present a challenge. People love living in Orange Village because of its character, welcoming appeal, wonderful amenities with great homes of various sizes and shapes surrounded by a beautiful canopy. The trails, once a source of conflict, now wonderfully connect the community. The upscale urban Pinecrest development is a success. We have still managed to hold that small-town feel and charm, as noted in our 2018 master plan, even with such additions. So how do we maintain that high standard and still continue progress? I have not minimized the concerns brought forward by some of our residents. What will this mean for your backyards and the future of others? What constitutes backland development, and how do we regulate that to minimize that? These issues have all given me great pause, and if this were an easy decision, I wouldn't have agonized over it since the proposal first crossed our table months ago. So I walked and studied the property and worked to assess the positives and the negatives. I heard from residents whose homes surround the property and others who lived in the village for many decades, as well as those newer to the village. I have listened and considered the comments and notes that were sent to me by both those who support it as well as those who are against it. After full consideration, I have decided to support the project. I have remained consistent in that support because I do believe it will be a beautiful asset to our village and well within the character of this town that I love so much. Change is uncomfortable, but it can happen without detriment to that feeling that brought us all here. We can and will institute guardrails to improve the comfort level of this project if it is passed. This is not backland development. This is a parcel of land that has been for sale for a number of years. The frontage offers a dilapidating building and a large uneven, unattractive paved parking lot. That's what can be viewed from Lander Road. The proposal offers a beautiful pond with landscaping at the entrance and a huge buffer of mature trees, much of which will remain throughout the project and be there for all to enjoy. I will continue to work with all parties to regulate backland development to minimize it, but this isn't that kind of development. I want this to be a street in Orange Village where I, as a 24-year resident, would be proud to reside and will work to ensure that that happens. This is not a mass development project. Rather, it is a single cul-de-sac street that will be surrounded by trees and greenery and the canopy that we love. This property need not set a precedent for others seeking a similar variance. It has distinctive characteristics based on its configuration and situation that would not automatically set in motion variances for other properties. The setback of the first lot is as far from the street as many of the homes on Lander Road, with all setbacks between neighboring yards allowing for a wooded buffer. With lot sizes ranging from just under half an acre and a handful of lots at an acre and a half, these are not tiny lots. My development fits into the character of Orange, and our lots are much smaller, but we still have plenty of green space to enjoy. This street will not be a detriment to the 1.5-acre lots on Lander that will remain intact, but rather a holistic approach to appropriate-sized lots based on configuration of the property to maintain setbacks and the beautiful tree canopy that currently no one sees or accesses from Lander. The zoning change to allow the proposal to move forward will not impede anyone else's property. It won't change the land or the homes that everyone loves. It will allow for families who want to move out to our amazing town to do so with homes that suit their needs. We are, after all, a community for all generations. In light of this project, the master plan's language has been invoked multiple times, and I'd like to address that. I have read and studied the master plan. I have gone back to it repeatedly. Created more than six years ago and recreated every 10 years, the plan, as you just heard, stated, quote, "represents the village's desires and aspirations but is not a regulatory document," end quote. The intent of the plan is to be, quote, "comprehensive yet flexible and not intended to be static," end quote. Character and community for all generations are at the very heart of this master plan. This proposed street speaks to the very essence of this. It offers a beautiful alternative to the failing building and crumbling asphalt without upsetting the character. Because growth, when done with care, does not equate to loss of character. Saying yes to rezoning this one piece of property does not equate to saying yes to all development in Orange Village. Some of the comments of those against the proposal have suggested that we on council are not doing our jobs by giving the Orange Village voters the right to vote on this, that we don't want to make the decision so we are, quote, "pawning it off on the voters." For me, that could be further from the truth. I support the project itself, and through multiple talks with the developer and a clear picture of this project, I am happy as representative of the majority of voters to vote my conscience on this one, just as others have expressed their opinions. But I am and always have been a big proponent of giving our residents the right to vote and to be a part of the process when it comes to community development. I believe that the passage of the resolution before us will allow for the many positives that I think this one cul-de-sac of homes will bring to our village and still further allow our residents to make the ultimate determination based on facts. I am grateful to all of you who took the time to write, respectively, share your thoughts, positive and negative, and offer opinions on this matter, not only tonight but throughout the last two months. I am listening. I have been taking it all to heart. Your voices and the voices of all of our residents matter, and that's why I will be voting yes tonight, so that everyone will be heard. Thank you.
Thank you, Stacy. Any other council comments? Ryan, you have something?
Yeah. All right. I wanted to begin with sharing some background around my vote this evening and my abstention back when this last came in front of council. At the time, I was in the middle of a business engagement with the KJI Group. As a result, I did not comment nor did I vote on the matter. That engagement has since ended, and I will now be participating this evening. I will now start with thanking all of the people who've come to share their opinions this evening. Thank you to those who have also reached out via email or by letters. Your opinions and words have provided meaningful insight into how several of you feel about this project. However, those we have heard from represent only a small sample of our approximately 3,400 residents. I hear all of you that have shared your perspectives with me. I understand those who are for the project, and I understand very well those who are against it. Many have referenced the master plan, which was drafted around seven years ago. The second line of that document reads as follows, "The plan is comprehensive yet flexible and is not intended to be static." The plan also outlines how future development in the village will always be subject to our planning and zoning process. The proposed project discussed this evening had gone through that process and was approved as a result. This has been a controversial topic, to say the least. I recognize those who have lived adjacent to or near the property for many years that have enjoyed the area in its current state. I also recognize that more can be done with this property than we see today. I love the green space, and I wish I had more of it myself on my three-tenths-of-an-acre lot, sharing a backyard with five other houses in Orangewood. I also see the opportunity to construct high-quality, single-family, tax-revenue-generating homes on lots significantly larger than mine. As it has been approved by planning and zoning, I see a thoughtfully designed development. It would be lovely to imagine how the nice new families that can join our community, especially with such walkability, to our parks and recreation areas. And these homes will bring added tax revenues as well. Generally speaking, I lean in favor of this moving forward. This development has stirred up strong feelings and opinions on both sides. The controversial nature of this debate leads me to strongly believe in allowing all registered voters of Orange Village to share in this decision. I believe we will gather more meaningful insights from a larger number of constituents, and it's also impossible for me to reasonably justify not allowing the voters of Orange to collectively make this choice, if it is an option to do so. From now to the election, all who are opposed can continue to organize and share their thoughts, and those who are for it can do the same. In the end, some will be happy with the outcome, while others will not, but it will be done in the most fair and reasonable way that I can imagine. The results of that vote may also lay some groundwork for an updated master plan or guidance for how we look forward when it comes to future development brought to planning and zoning and council. If voted down, we can utilize the results of our community survey and the ideas shared this evening to revisit another plan or opportunities for this property. Thank you again to everyone who came out tonight for sharing your thoughts with council and your fellow residents.
Thank you, Ryan.
Yes, please. I don't have prepared comments like my fellow council members. I would simply say that, to me, as an attorney, process does matter, and I will be voting no. It's not because I'm trying to deny anyone, any resident, the right to vote. It's because I believe that process matters, and I don't believe this has been done appropriately.
Comments? Jeff.
Counsel.
You're speaking on the mic. Make sure you're speaking on the mic.
Name's Jeff Foster, new member, newest member of the council. I look forward to all the comments that I've gotten. What I am enjoying the most is the democratic process that is taking place. I've gotten comments for and against. This is a very emotional, highly contested procedure that we're going through tonight. I've lived in Orange since 2005. I enjoy the greenage, but I also have a neighbor that's very close to me. This is important. I am going to vote to move forward, not just for the development but for the process of democracy. People don't take that as serious as they should. So this is just for -- I love my green space, but I think there's a democratic process that needs to be upheld.
Want to speak?
And I also will be voting for it. I think that the -- there's clearly a lot of controversy in the village. There's some are for and some against. I think the only way to work that out is to have all voters agree on that.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Anna, will you please call roll for the vote?
Shane. Bilski?
Yes.
No. Vincent? Wait a minute. Go ahead. Vincent, sorry. Oh, she can't hear me. Did she say yes?
She said yes.
Okay. Foster?
Yes.
Madden?
Yes.
Silver?
Yes.
Is approved. There is no new... And there is no new business. I will now make a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of discussing with the law director pending litigation. Is there a second? Thank you, Jeff. Anna, please call roll.
Perry?
Yes.
Bilski?
Yes.
Alner?
Yes.
Vincent?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Madden?
Yes.
Silver?
Yes.
Invite Lieutenant Roberts.
We will invite Lieutenant Roberts to join us, and will we comment on this after? We will be commenting on what we are discussing in an executive session once we reconvene. I cannot tell you how long it'll be, but we will reconvene and comment on what was discussed.
But you won't be taking any...
It does not relate to this matter we discussed today. It's completely unrelated, for what it's worth.